At this time, I'll call us to order and I'll ask the clerk to establish the quorum.
Commissioner Blakemore.
Present.
Commissioner Askew.
Here.
Chairman Whitfield.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz.
Present.
All members present, thank you. This time, to the board, we have the approval of the agenda. Is there any changes or modifications to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion of the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as presented. Okay, since we've had a lot of public hearings lately, we've got quite a list of minutes to approve from prior meetings, so just bear with us here as we take care of this very important part of our meeting. The approval of the minutes from the public hearing held on August 25, 2022 at 8:00 a.m. This was one of our public hearings that we had on the millage rate. So this was in the packet, we have some there on the back, if anybody needs a copy, or this is also on our website. So do we have a motion of the board to approve these minutes from August 25 at 8:00 a.m.?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Blakemore, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, these minutes are approved as presented. Okay, the next we have is our minutes from a public hearing held later that evening, also on August 25 at 6:30 p.m. Here at the Annex III building, where we also had the second public hearing in regards to the millage rate. Do we have a motion to approve these minutes?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, these are approved as presented. Next set we have was our regular scheduled meeting that was held here at the Annex III on August 25 at 7:00 p.m. The clerk has prepared these minutes as well, do we have a motion to approve these minutes?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Hart, we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, these minutes are approved as presented. Our next set is approval of the minutes from a public hearing held on September 1, 2022 at 6:30 p.m. Here at the Annex III location as well. Do we have a motion to approve these minutes?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Blakemore, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, these are approved as presented. Okay, the next set of approval of minutes is for a special call meeting held on September 1, 2022, here at the Annex III as well. Any discussion on these minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve these?
Motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, these are approved as presented as well. Okay, at this time, we have our public hearing for the proposed FY 2023 general fund budget and proposed FY 2023 enterprise fund and special revenue fund. This was in our agenda packet for everyone's review. After the Board of Commissioners set the millage rate after our last meeting, we did go back and modify the agenda to match up to the projected income. So there was a budget reduction of six, round numbers about $678,000 to the general fund. And there is a summary of those adjustments in the packet, a one-page summary. So there was no proposed adjustments to any of the elected officials' office with the exception of the district attorney. He actually notified me and offered up some additional budget savings because not all of his employees took family insurance coverage. So he was able to free up some dollars in his budget by $30,500. And so that was the only elected official that the budget modifications affected. Everything else was within the general budget of the commissioner's office. And so we also, in this budget proposal that the board will be taking action on, still includes the proposed raises that we had, that we've been talking about. And as you can see, there was actually even a couple of modifications in some of the departments dealing with personnel, but it was very minimal. So is there anyone here tonight that would like to come up and speak to the budget, have any questions, want to point out anything, anyone tonight that would like to address the budget, either the general fund or the special revenues? Okay, oh yes ma'am. Please come up to the podium and for the record, please state your name.
Hi, I'm Erin Reifbauer, and I just saw the budget, but I was wondering why there was such a decrease in the pay of the shelter and the services for the shelter.
Okay, this budget, it was a desire of the board to combine, from a department standpoint, the animal control department and the animal shelter into one budget. And so for historical data, we're showing those prior year budgets, but there is a section in the budget that refers to, so would be less confusing, is animal services is the way it's titled in the budget.
Right.
And so it was a combination of bringing those two departments together, and I believe even with those two departments coming together, there was some increase in operational cost as well. Trying to find what page that's on, but I don't recall that it was a reduction. Okay, yeah, the, on page 45 is the, what's now referred to Division or Department 3915 Animal Services. And so that, again, is the combination of the two, breaks out the personnel, the operational expenses for a total of $750,450.
And I didn't see in here where, about five months ago, you and I had discussed that you were going to be bringing $250,000 to $350,000 to improve the animal shelter?
That is in the sploshed budget that was approved by the voters. And so on our website, Joe's done a real nice job of listing out all of the sploshed allocations. And so there is an allocation in the splosh for facilities, improvements and upgrades to the animal shelter. So that's where that would be.
Okay, so.
So it's not in the general fund budget.
Okay, so that's, nothing has been done as far as that then?
Right, that's separate from this.
Okay, that's left from this. And, real quick, am I able to speak about other things other than this?
Not at this time, later in the meeting.
Is this my five minutes?
No, no, later in the meeting, there'll be time for general questions, comments or concerns, but we need you to stay just on the budget at this time.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Wait, real quick, also the budget on the roadwork. I have noticed a lot of roadwork being done with very limited amount of workers being able to, like, control the roads for safety issues and stuff like that. So what's bringing up my concern is there was roadwork being done, and there was also, like, a school stop, I'm gonna say maybe 500 feet down the road. And there was not enough help for them to be able to make sure that these kids got off this bus safely and actually do their job. I mean, I think I saw three people total. One was where the actual work was being done, and one was, I don't know how many yards, maybe 30 yards away from where the work was actually being done. And on the opposite side, the same thing. And in the middle there, there was a school bus with kids getting off of it.
Do you recall the name of the road?
I know it was Alabama Highway or 153?
151.
151.
Yeah, if indeed, if that is the road, you know, if you remember, that is a state highway, and so county workers would not have been involved in any road maintenance or activity.
So that would be the state, okay, all right, that was just, that was it, so.
And I know it gets confusing because they're state, county and city roads, but anytime you see a road that's identified by a number, that's typically gonna be a state road.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good, very good. Any other budget questions? Okay, hearing none, we will move forward with our agenda. Okay, we do now have a planning and zoning public hearing, so this is for Britt and Anita Bab, request a conditional use variance for a tiny house for property located at 1213 North Cedar Lane, Flintstone, Georgia, tax map impartial 0-022-004. I'd like to ask, is there anyone here that wants to speak in opposition to this? If you're in opposition to this, and you would like to come up and address the board? Okay, is there anyone that wants to speak in, okay, you in opposition, okay. Anyone that would like to come up and speak in favor of this, or if you are the applicant? You don't have to, it's not required, but if you want to speak, if you are in favor or if you are the applicant for this request, this would be the time that you would want to come and address the board.
This was for a tiny home?
Yes, it, the Britt and Anita Bab, yeah, for the conditional use variance on the tiny home. Is this the one you wanted to speak to?
No, I can be late, I'm not accounting present.
Okay, yes.
Want to stand up again?
Yeah, you'll need to, specifically about this topic, right? For this topic, okay.
Yes, I approve the tiny home.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, anyone else on this topic, either for or against, doesn't matter, either way, if you want to speak on this, this would be the time to come to address in the public forum. Okay, we're gonna move on our agenda. Okay, the next one, James D. Spurgeon requests a rezone from C1 commercial to R2 residential for property located at 5285 North Highway 27, Lafette, Georgia 30728, tax map impartial numbered 0-329-2-028. Anyone that wants to speak in opposition, that's opposed to this rezone on Highway 27? Any opposition? Is anyone wants to speak in favor of this, or if the applicant would like to speak? Yes, sir, come up, please. You'd state your name for the record.
James D. Spurgeon, I'd like to have it rezoned. Mr. Smith is here with me, he is going to put an apartment in this particular piece of property. It was commercial, and I think the reason probably it was zoned commercial is Stanley Massengale fixed a cabinet shop in this building for Frank Haddock, and he built cabinets in there for a period of time. Okay, I've lived in that area since 1977, there's never been anything but residential in this little house. It's right there in the corner of Glass Road in 27, and I would like to have it, you know, back to residential where I can sell it.
Okay, does any board members have any questions or comments?
Resilient to R1 or R2?
It's residential, I don't know whether they.
It says here R2.
R2 is what it says on here.
Okay, I was looking in the packet. Okay, yeah, okay.
Anything else for Mr. Spurgeon?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak for or against this rezone? This would be the time for you to come up. Okay, hearing none, we're gonna go ahead and close out our public hearing time, and we're gonna move to the next item on our agenda, which is our proclamation for Constitutional Week. Is there anyone here that was here specifically for this proclamation? In the past time, sometimes there'd be representatives from the organization here for this. I'll go ahead and read this at this time, this is a proclamation by the Walker County Board of Commissioners, Constitution Week 2022. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17, 2022 marks the 235th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas William Fue Jr. of Georgia was one of 39 brave men who served in a constitutional convention and signed their name to the document that would change the world. And whereas it is a privilege and is the best interest of the county and the nation that we study the Constitution, and it is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation for our way of life. And whereas a celebration of Constitution, for the celebration of the Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution, and was adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into law by President Dwayne D. Eisenhower on August 2, 1956. Therefore, I, Chairman Shannon K. Whitfield, on behalf of the Walker County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim that this is Constitution Week in Walker County, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privileges of being an American with all of the rights and responsibilities for which the privileges involve. Signed and sealed the 22nd day of September 2022. So is there anyone here tonight that is part of the Daughters of the American Revolution? Okay, hearing none, we'll make sure that they do get this copy and make sure that gets to them. Okay, now the next item on our agenda is our time for public comment, and this is the time, if you have something you want to speak about publicly before the board, this would be your time to come up. So anyone that would like to come up and speak, we do ask you to keep your comments to five minutes, because that's the time that we have set. We ask and prefer that you keep your comments relevant to our county, because those are the only things that we have an impact on, the only things that we can affect. So we just want you to use your time wisely. We would love to be able to solve a lot of the nation's problems, but they don't let us in those lanes. So we would want you to come up and speak your name so you can be recognized. Who we'd like to speak? Yes, ma'am, please come up, and please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Sandra Zollner, and I'm a little upset, I'm also very nervous speaking in front of a bunch of people, but I also am interested in the animal control. And I've moved here three and a half years ago, and I know we went through a lot of COVID, so for that reason, things were a little bit different. But I tried to call several times, and until actually yesterday, no one ever called me back or texted me back about anything. And as far as I knew, the place was closed, and you couldn't get in there, and no one calls you back, so you're just like, what do you do? And so yesterday, I called and I said I was interested in getting a dog. And my dog gets to pick the dog, kind of a scenario, but they're like, you can't go back in the back, you can only see one at a time, which I kind of get that, but the part that really bothered me was that they're not allowed to have any kind of volunteer? That makes no sense to me whatsoever. I lived in Naples most of my life, and I constantly, after work, went over to their animal control. They had two separate rooms that would have six cats and five cats, and I would just sit there for half an hour petting the cats, because I know I made their day. I probably made their week. And then I would go to the other one and do the same thing. Or I would go and throw a ball for a dog, for dogs that day, or take them for a walk. And animals need people, and they don't feel comfortable if they don't have a person. So for a lot of animals, they get very stressed out and actually go crazy in those places, especially with all the barking. So one person that's kind of volunteered their time and is asking for nothing should be able to throw a ball for a dog. It's just not that hard. I don't understand, do you know why they will take no volunteers?
We have had volunteers in the past, and, you know, it's, we don't have really the accommodations to set up rooms because we have limited space.
Well, see, like I said, I've never been there yet, so I'm just going off of what the one in Naples was like, that I went to all the time. But almost every place I would imagine has a large fenced-in grass area. That's dog walking, and that's throwing ball. And it doesn't make any difference if it's a room with four cats in it, or you just go into a kennel-type thing that has 12 cats and hang out with them. You know, I just don't think it's too much that I want to give this, and for some reason, they won't let me. Not only that, I worked for a vet, I ran a kennel for three years, washed, bathed, whole thing, everything, and between myself and Erin, we know a lot about animals. And for them to tell me no, that I can't volunteer my time, I don't think that's acceptable at all.
Okay, we'll look and reevaluate that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else that'd like to speak on any topic? Yes, sir, I saw your hand for it.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Can I sit here?
No, we really need you to come up, please.
My name's Robert Raskowski, I'm not a resident of this county, but I only can access my property from your county. I am actually in Dade County off of Massey Drive, in Kenneth Massey Drive, up on top of the mountain. And as someone who's developing that property, I have real concerns after going up there multiple times, especially the road going up the mountain to 136 and 157, with the amount of fog that we have there. Has there ever been discussions about putting a fog warning system up on that for people going up on that mountain? Because there's also a lot of truck traffic going up on that mountain.
Jumping up going up on the 136 route?
Right, up the wrong 136 route, that's your, this county's property, that side of the mountain, I understand, is your county.
Well, Highway 136 is also a state road, as well as 157 are both state roads, so we don't have any rights to maintain those.
The state is, 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 is in contact? Okay, the second thing was on 157, when you're making the left-hand turn and going to McLemore, my property turnoff is maybe a mile from McLemore. There's a lot more increased traffic on that road going to that facility, and there's gonna be a lot more going to that facility when they open up the hotel, 240-something room hotel, I'm sure you guys are fully aware of, probably sometime in 2024.
Correct.
That stretch of road has not been paved as far as I've known since I've owned my property. Is that, is that due for any type of improvements or any pavement?
I know the state's got a very, really good systematic way of their road paving requirements. I don't know what their schedule is for paving 157, but I agree, it's getting, it's getting time, it's getting rough.
Yeah, there's like no shoulder on that road either, and there's gonna be a lot more increased traffic.
So we would just have to inquire with GDOT and see if they can give us timelines on their paving for those other mountain roads.
And if you don't mind, it's only take 20 seconds, it's just a personal question. The road that I'm on, Kenneth Massey, I don't know if that, I'm pretty sure that's a private road in your county. Can, I mean, Massey Drive is a private road in your county, and so is Kenneth Massey Drive, going back to my property. In regards to the right-of-way, do I have to seek permission from the landowner that's at the main road there, 157, if I want to look into signage? Or is that something that I have to just clear through your county, or I have to clear it through both of you?
Well, for this. Oh, you say for business type sign?
Yes, and I'm setting up a business back on my property that's back on that private road.
Probably we need to have you contact our planning office, and also make sure there's, look at the type of business and if it's the zoning for your property.
My, I have no zoning in Dade County.
And that's on a state route as well, the right-of-ways would be state right-of-ways.
Yeah, that's right.
So I know you don't want to, it's kind of weird that the two roads we're talking about, 136, and they're both, those are state routes.
I don't have a problem, I just want to know who to contact.
Okay, well, it would be, it would be the state DOT, but we can probably get you a contact number through the commissioner's office.
Okay, do you, do you think that, as far as you know, that I have to also contact the property owner that their land sits on that right-of-way? Or do I have the right to do something without their permission, since I have permission to use that right-of-way?
That, I would not know, you probably would need to look at your right-of-way agreement, see what it calls for, and then, that being a state road, I don't know if the state would allow you to put a sign actually on the state right-of-way itself, so you probably would be back into the private property. So you would, you probably need to have that conversation with that property owner just to be safe.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, anyone else that'd like to speak? Yes, sir, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Mark Crum, I live off of Lime Stone Ridge, Shorty Shelton Road. Been in here once before, I think about a year or so ago, talked to you about Shorty Shelton. When we bought the property seven years ago, I believe it was, it was paved road. Since then, you've come in and put gravel on top of it. I'll give you a little bit of my background, I'm a 30-year DOT employee, I ran five counties for them, 20 years in metro Atlanta, so I'm familiar with the game. I know that we got told, I think last year, that we were on the list to get something done with Shorty Shelton Road. Haven't seen anything come out, haven't seen a list. I know with T-Splash not passing this pass around, I don't know what you're gonna do next year, but supposedly there was T-Splash money for possibly Shorty Shelton, I believe it was rated as not the worst, but next to the worst road in the county. And we haven't heard anything from anybody, we've popped tires and dashes falling apart. I mean, when you take a paved road and you put gravel on top of it, the gravel has nowhere to go. It goes through tires, I've worn out tires, I've placed probably three grand worth of tires in the last five years. So, you know, we're not asking for a highway, we're asking for what we originally had and what the tax map says, it's a paved road. Don't even have to stripe it. And another thing I'd like to talk about is maintenance. I mean, nobody ever comes out until we do a lot of complaining, and usually we'll get some gravel. My brother's here with me tonight, he'll tell you, I spend at least a day a month blading that road myself. So, you know, I know how to maintain a road, that one hasn't been touched, I don't even believe you own a motorator. When we do complain, we'll get a bobcat down there with a load of gravel, and then I'll take the gravel, and once this will wash down the big hill on Shorty Shelton, then move it back up the hill for you. Like I said, I retired five years ago, almost, other than maintaining Shorty Shelton Road for you. Thank you very much. Please let us know something.
Sure, and Bobby's in the back there with us, so maybe after, maybe Bobby can get with you as well, back there on the back row.
I don't know who Bobby is.
Raise your hand, Bobby.
I met Carlin once.
Yeah, Bobby's, Carlin's still on the team, but so is Bobby.
I'm sure, yes.
All right, anyone, yes, sir.
My name's Alan Martin, and I live on Lime Stone Ridge, too. Just like what Mark was talking about, I drove UPS truck for 40 years in central Georgia. I know dirt roads, I've driven dirt roads. We ain't got a dirt road, we got a pile of mess. Can you get a milling machine, you know, just to mill up the old road so that we could press down the gravel to at least do something? But I, I kind of agree with. But I I kind of agree with my brother. We bought on a paved road. Wasn't our fault the bond for the construction crew was set so low that they devastated that road. And there's 10 grand. We know 10 grand is not going to fix that. And that bond should have never been set at that, but.
You're talking about for logging along.
Yeah, for logging and clearing.
Unfortunately, there's state regulations on that. We can't even.
Well, it's wrong.
Right, yeah, it's too low.
It's wrong, you know. But the problem is, and I'll get my statistics together next month so I can tell you once I go to all the family members. But I know for a fact, one nephew spent over $6,000 on electrical parts on his car because it has beat it to death. I tried to find a picture, I'll have it next month, of a piece of gravel going through a BF Goodrich All-Terrain Radial, straight through the center, because it hits that that rock sitting here next to that piece of gravel. And when it hits, it just impales itself on it, you know. We're not talking a couple of grand here. We're talking $12,000, $13,000 in car repairs, you know, new tires every year because they puncture on the sidewalls. We we they do the best they can with what they have as far as putting gravel down, but the first good rain. We have a creek that, you know, we should just name Gravel Creek. It just goes there, you know. I love this place. I've been up here seven years. I love it. Even the fact that my taxes have gone from $800 per land to $12,000. I'm still not fussing yet. But, you know, we bought on paved road. I I expect somebody to live up to their word saying, we're going to pave that road again, you know. Thank you.
I have a question for you. How far or either one of you can answer. How far you're saying it was it was actually paved? I'm trying to place, I think, did they chip seal over the is that what was done? Was chip sealing over that asphalt? Because it I know that I know y'all's development because I was the building inspector when y'all started building back. So I've run that road a lot as well. And I know it's in it isn't very, you know, much disrepair now.
I we just always come in an old country road.
It wasn't asphalted all the way back.
It looks like to me in my my experience that maybe Shorty Shelton, you know, used to cut off up there. Shorty Shelton was paved pretty good, chip sealed.
Right.
And everything else down from there was that leftover asphalt that somebody threw out and spread it.
Yeah, that's what.
I got you.
That's basically all it was.
Okay, I was just making confusing me because I don't remember it actually being a base and a, you know, like a binder and a topper more, so I remember it being a chip seal situation.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all. I just wanted to clarify so we can look into whatever.
If you could just mill up the old road and press down what you've got there and throw some tar over it. I mean, that's better than what we have.
You think that was kind of chip sealing?
Yeah, it's not what we want, but it's what we got, you know. But, yeah, we got either that or somebody needs to start paying some bills for us, you know. Because we're, I mean, you don't burn through all terrain radials in eight months, you know. I have a son who has two kids down there. My entire family moved up here, you know. I mean, we're here.
It's a beautiful area.
It's gorgeous and I ain't going nowhere, you know. But I promise, you fix my road, you'll never see my face again.
We'll look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, you know, I've driven down Shorty Shelton multiple times, met with you, yes, sir, and talked with your sister. I agree with you 100%. Shorty Shelton is in very, very rough shape. I made it a point to drive down early one morning about 4 o'clock in the dark. It's even worse at night.
Yeah, go, go.
If I did it, it'd all over me.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone? Yes, sir.
So talking about roads, I brought you some pictures for your viewing pleasure. Take, I can pass that. My name is Randy Brown. I'm here representing homeowners and Philstone Farms. Couple of different items on my agenda for this evening are culverts in Philstone Farms as well as the roads in Philstone Farms. I've been talking with or had discussions with the road department now for going on probably a year and a half, two years. There has been, well, let me say, we need to know where the culvert responsibility lies in there, whether that is from curb to curb or whether that is from sidewalk to sidewalk. We've had some four culverts in there that we've actually ended up repairing over the last several years due to deterioration. So whenever those culverts were installed, my understanding is that they were not installed properly and wasn't sealed properly around the pipe that dispositions the water out. So what's happening is that's making the soil or the concrete and asphalt erode, causing those culverts to end up caving in. So I'd like to know where that responsibility responsibility lies. Is that a county issue? Is it curb to curb or is it sidewalk to sidewalk? Who does belong to?
That's that's a very fair question. I I don't know the answer to that. I know that this subdivision, all these roads were taken in, and I believe it was late December 2016. And I know there was problems then when these roads were taken in. Like you say, some of this was the developer and the install of all this.
Yes.
So we'll have to go back and look at those documents from 2016 to determine what the county actually took.
And it should, I think our road registry also should reflect the right-of-way there, which would give us, you know, what what we actually have. But we can look into that handy for sure.
Yeah.
But we, like I said, we've repaired, we've already repaired four ourselves. There's approximately 30 throughout the neighborhood, not including a couple that are actually in the common ground areas. So just take that into note. And road conditions due to deterioration throughout the neighborhood, especially on Battle Farm Court, Philstone Commons and Deer Ridge Lane, those roads are in very bad shape. We've actually had vehicles and some feedback, one of them being myself. Actually ended up hitting a high spot in the road and separating my exhaust where I had to have that repaired. We've also had a investigation out there at one time. The police officer came back to me and actually reported that his vehicle scraped in a couple of different areas on Battle Farm Court and Philstone Commons. Lastly, that y'all are probably aware of is the mail carrier decided that they're not going to deliver mail because their vehicles were scraping on some of the pictures that you see. Since then, they came in about 10 days ago, repaired some of those high spots. However, now what they've repaired in the one picture, I think it's the next to the last one, you'll see where they put down some gravel. One of those is in front of a culvert. So if we ever do any get get a good rain, most of that gravel is going to end up washing down into that culvert.
Yeah, I know Carlin's done some evaluation. We've had a couple of contractors look at this because there's an extensive amount of base failure, which is what these pictures are reflecting where when the subdivision was built, the base and the compaction was not correct. And so we have an opportunity as soon as our mowing crews finish up and we can free up some team members to come in there and dig that base up and recompact all of that and make sure the base is good and let that set up some before we try to put any more asphalt on it. Because we don't know, like you're talking about with this drainage, we don't know what all the problems are to we get into it or how far they may reach. So so that was kind of our thinking was to get in there in the latter part of this year when we've got our crews available that are not mowing.
Okay, we we understand that some we got basically two root causes, what we've came down to. And one is the amount of aggregate and all. And however that was developed, was not developed properly. I'm not sure where the developer or the county ended up failing for inspections or how that ended up happening. Same thing with the culverts themselves. So any attention y'all can give to this, we would greatly appreciate it. Carlin has been a little bit of help. They have gotten in there and patched some of those roads and stuff. Unfortunately, since then, those areas have deteriorated and we're kind of back in square one.
Yeah, he's got it on his project list for sure. Yeah, I know we've talked about it quite a bit, so thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Randy.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, Aaron.
Hello, Aaron, right there again. I wanted to ask you about, again, of course, the animal shelter. I know that you had mentioned before that the volunteering part of it had to do with your liability of insurance. So I would like to propose to the commissioners and you that if I were to donate two years of coverage to allow people that want to come and help the shelter with the animals, is that something you all would consider? So I would pay for the additional coverage that would allow volunteers to go to the shelter.
That's a possibility. One thing when I mentioned to her earlier, we'd look into its.
Or can you sign a waiver?
Yeah, just a few months back, I forget the exact month, we actually changed insurance providers completely, all of our coverages. And so that's why I want to circle back with them and see what their policy is. I know when we were with our prior carrier, there was not anything that they wanted us to do. But now that we're with the association of that.
Are you all with Farmers Insurance now?
We're with Association of County Commissioners Plan.
Oh, okay.
Because we actually had a one of our large facilities up in District One, up in Rossville, that we were not even able to insure. And that was one of the reasons why we we needed to change it. So now we have that building insured, but the county had never even been able to insure that facility.
Wow.
Because we couldn't get a carrier to even look at it. So, yeah.
I was just thinking, you know, with it being such a small shelter that that I would donate two years of coverage for anyone that wants to go volunteer. And I say two years only just to see how it works out, you know, just to say, here's two years of donation to have people that want to go and help the shelter.
Yeah, let's talk about it. I've got your contact and you've got mine as well.
Okay, sure.
Let's communicate on that.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, please come up.
I don't have much to say. I just want you to know we're backing Randy. My name is Eloise Gross and I live on Philstone Commons, one of the roads that Randy's talking about. And we would appreciate anything that you all can do because it is rough going in and out. And we appreciate what you've already done that made it much easier. But there's like puddles and holes and but just want to let you know we're backing him and backing y'all and would appreciate what you can do.
Well, thank you for speaking. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, please come up.
Hi, I'm Laura Alsley, and I just wanted to give everyone a real quick update. Commissioner Whitfield was kind enough to call me and we met last month about the pension plan. And, you know, I walked away learning that his team and he were dissatisfied with the current provider's service. And the other thing that, you know, I come away with, well, we talked about and discussed, was the fact that I felt like it was a fundamental change, changing from the 5% required investment return to the 7% investment return. And the commissioner did make a very good suggestion. And he said, well, for that matter, we could move it to three or four. And that is a liability. I think that's a fantastic idea. You know, that's important because in a market like what we've had, that would be less that we have to make up, you know, if there's a 7% liability or required return. So moving that down was a great idea. I hope that you are able to negotiate that. And I have complete confidence that you can do that. The other thing that we talked about was we could not find the $200,000 savings. However, he did ask his team to look into that. So they're going to do more due diligence. And I did specifically mention that they needed to get the weighted cost, average cost per portfolio in order to get an absolute pure and accurate cost. So they're they're looking into that right now and I hope they get that resolved with the current providers. And then I did think about what one of the trustees had mentioned during our meeting. And he said that, you know, looking at these proposals, it's very difficult. And he's absolutely right. Because when you're talking about two different providers providing information, some of the information is in different order, of course. The language is a little different. And one thing I started thinking about since that meeting is I thought it would be good for you all to perhaps put a committee, like a pension committee or a pension board together and maybe include someone that has kind of skin in the game, like a participant of the plan. And I think that they could do some heavy lifting and provide you all with just pure data that will help you make the best decisions possible. So I appreciate you all taking your time that evening that we we met. And I wish you all all the luck in the world. And I hope that you all make a very good decision for our county, the taxpayers and participants. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move next on our agenda then into our new business. Under new business, we have a resolution R-35-22 to adopt a joint service delivery strategy pursuant to the Service Delivery Strategy Act of 1997. So let's see here. Okay, this is the packet here for that. Okay, so let me read this resolution and we'll talk a little bit about this. Okay, Resolution R-35-22, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to adopt a joint service delivery strategy pursuant to the Service Delivery Strategies Act and to authorize the chair to execute any necessary forms. And furtherance of said adoption and substitutional the same form and hereto attach Exhibit A and the others and for other purposes. Whereas Walker County and its municipalities of Chickamauga, Fort Oathorpe, Laffette, Lookout Mountain and Rossville, Georgia adopted a service delivery strategy pursuant to the requirements set forth by the Georgia House Bill 489 codified in OCGA 3670-20, which originally documents were executed in 1999 and most recently updated in 2012. And whereas Walker County and its municipalities are required to review and revise the county's joint service delivery strategies in conjunctions with the updates to the Joint Comprehensive Plan, which must be updated every 10 years. Whereas Walker County and its municipalities and Chickamauga, Fort Oathorpe, Laffette, Lookout Mountain and Rossville, Georgia have mutually agreed to the services outlined with the service delivery strategy as updated. And whereas Walker County Board of Commissioners authorized the chairman, Shannon K. Whitfield, to sign request documents acknowledging approval of the service delivery strategies, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, hereby adopt the joint service delivery strategies for Walker County. Be it further resolved that the event, so let's see, help me there. Close that again?
Scrivener.
Scrivener areas, excuse me, errors shall be discovered in the exhibits hereto after the adoption hereof of the board. Hereby authorize and direct that the such scrivious errors shall be corrected without additional board action. Be it further resolved that the board grants the chairman the authority to take any and all further action necessary to carry out the intents and purposes of this resolution so and adopted the 22nd day of September 2022. As the resolution outlines, this is an exercise that all counties and all cities in Georgia go through every 10 years. There is a summary in here that's color-coded that lists out all of the services in the first summary where there's no modifications. And it says there, just for reference only, the next line says services with no modifications. So to give an example, especially for those walking watching at home, one that's real easy is airport. There's only one airport, Public Airport in the county, and that is the city of Laffette. So by the county, Chickamauga, Fort Oathorpe, Lookout Mountain and Rossville, where we have airports, it's a no. Laffette's the only one with a municipal airport and no one else, none of the other, the cities nor the county has the desire to build an airport. That's kind of the way this flows. Ambulance service is the next one that I'll show here. The county is responsible for providing the ambulance service countywide, which includes all the cities. And so the cities have. And so the cities have no desire to add any ambulances out of their budgets. So that's kind of how this flows. The second page, again, these are just for references, it's just kind of a summary, new services or services that are being modified. So this is where any services that are being changed, maybe it was missed the last time or something has changed or there's a desire. So as an example, the prior documents, when it listed court, it just said courts. It did not break out all the courts. So here in Walker County, Walker County funds and pay for the staffing of facilities of state court, superior court, probate court, magistrate court, juvenile court, drug court, mental health court. All of that had not been included in the documents, but those are all courts that take place in Walker County every single business day. And then since then too, there had been some services that, where there's been some intergovernmental agreements put in place. Halfway down the page primarily in elections. Elections have gotten very complicated and a lot of the cities have chosen to come up with intergovernmental agreements with the county. So where you see IGA, that means intergovernmental agreement. So since 10 years ago, Chickamauga, city Lafette, Lookout Mountain and Rossville have all entered into intergovernmental agreements for the Walker County Election Board to run their elections in their jurisdictions. And so that notes those changes. And so we've met with the, the city leaders several times. Everybody's gone through this list. We think we've got everything captured. And so the Georgia Department of Community Affairs is who actually oversees this and also working with our regional commission, they've come up and give us guidance and recommendations for this. So there's a lot of documents here, the way this has to be laid out. And so as the cities go through this and they approve this in their city council meetings, there is that possibility, there could be a typo or just an honest mistake or something that got missed that's in place. One of the reasons why you, that this was put in place years ago is to try to help make sure there's not duplication of services, where there's overlap, where there's tax dollars being wasted. And so one example might be with an ambulance service. If you don't have good communication and the, the cities and the counties are crossing over each other with ambulance services and they're using city tax dollars or using county tax dollars and we've got ambulances running everywhere, this makes you sit down at the table with your local governments and say, who's going to do this function? Also, this affects your growing areas, more so your metro counties around Atlanta. This is where they have a lot of back and forth or tug of war, so to speak, is with delivering of utility services, the expansion of water lines, sewer lines. So when this was done 10 years ago, the Emmercy Valley area where Brian lives, there was no public water at all. Everybody was on 100% wells if they had water. Nobody wanted to run water in the Emmercy Valley area for a long, long time because it was going to be a very expensive project. Well, some residents over there several years back started having well failures, was having droughts and things. And so the county stepped up and ran water lines for the entire, pretty much the entire Emmercy Valley area. So part of the service delivery, that happened within the last 10 years. That had to be updated in the maps that are put together for us through the regional commission to show that that service area is being provided water through the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority. One of the requests that the city of Chickamauga had this year of the group, and there was no objection to, the city of Chickamauga has some additional sewer services that they're looking at and considering, but those sewer lines would be outside their current city limits. And so there was no objections because it, it matches up to their area. So when we have a rural community like this and things are kind of spread out, you know, there's usually not any controversial around services of utilities because normally there's more desire than there is ability to put that infrastructure in. So again, this has been a very good collaborative project. As far as I know, there's not any disagreements or any disputes, but this has to be reviewed by the Board of Commissioners as well as every city council, including the city of Fort Oathor, because a large portion of the city of Fort Oathor is in Coteau's County. But there's, I think, around 300 or 400 people that live in the city of Fort Oathor, but that's in Walker County. So that's why you're seeing Fort Oathor listed on here is because part of the city of Fort Oathor is in Walker County. So they are a part of this process, even though it is in a small way. So any questions on this? I know this is kind of a big packet here. Is there any questions of the board or concerns? Okay, at this time, we do have the resolution that I have read. Do we have a motion of the board to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. By Commissioner Stoltz, any further questions, concerns of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this resolution is unanimously approved. And then our staff will be working with the, the cities to get their resolutions because the, all the counties in Georgia are responsible to kind of be the coordinator of these service deliveries. So once we get all the other five cities' resolutions, then we will be passing that along to the Department of Community Affairs to get their final approval. Okay, next we have Resolution R-36-22. This is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to adopt a general fund budget containing estimates of proposed revenues and expenses for fiscal year 2023, beginning on October 1st, 2022 and ending on September 30th, 2023. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. And whereas on August 11th, 2022, the chairman of the board and the county finance officer prepared and submitted a proposed general fund budget for fiscal year 2023 and placed copies of the budget in the Board of Commissioners' office and online at walkercountyge.gov for review by county residents. And whereas notice was published on August 10th, 2022, in the Walker County Messenger, the legal organ of Walker County, that the proposed budget was available for review and that its public hearings on the proposed budget would be held on August 25th, 2022, September 8th, 2022. And notice was also published on August 31st, 2022, in the Walker County Messenger that the September 8th, 2022 public hearing had been rescheduled for September 22nd, 2022. Whereas a public hearing was held on August 25th, 2022 and September 22nd, 2022 to receive public comment on the proposed budget pursuant to OCGA 3681-5. And whereas the Board of Commissioners, having studied the proposed budget, deemed the approval of the budget to be in the best interest of Walker County, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the budget attached hereto as Exhibit A and made part hereof of the year beginning October 1st, 2022 and ending on September 30th, 2023, is adopted and approved and effective on October 1, 2022, so, so resolved and adopted the 22nd day of September 2022. That's a lot. So this does have the summary of the changes that were made to get our budget balanced from the original budget that was released. Those changes can be found in the far right-hand column, because what was released originally was in the 2023 Finance Review column. The far column to the right is the 2023 County, it's labeled County Commissioner column, and that would be what would be in order on this resolution to adopt here tonight. And again, all of those changes are reflected in that one-page summary. Is there any questions or comments or concerns of the board?
No, sir.
Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion to adopt the revised budget as presented in this resolution?
Motion to adopt.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. By Commissioner Hart, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the general fund budget is adopted as presented. Thank you, gentlemen. Next one we have is the adoption of the enterprise and special revenue funds. I know this is kind of boring to have to listen to, but since this is our, our annual budget, I think it's very important for the record that we do read this resolution, but you're going to feel like I'm repeating myself. A Resolution R-37-22, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to adopt the enterprise funds and special revenue budget containing estimates of proposed revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 2023, beginning on October 1, 2022 and ending on September 30th, 2023. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. And whereas on August 11th, 2022, the chairman of the board and the county finance officer prepared and submitted the proposed enterprise funds and special revenue budget for fiscal year 2023 and placed copies of the budget in the Commissioners' office and online at walkercountyga.gov for review by the county residents. And whereas notice to the public, excuse me, notice was published on August 10th, 2022, in the Walker County Messenger, the legal organ of Walker County, that the proposed budget was available for review and that the public hearing on the proposed budget would be held on August 25th, 2022 and September 8th, 2022. And notice was also published on August 31st, 2022, in the Walker County Messenger that the September 8th, 2022 public hearing had been rescheduled for September 22nd, 2022. And whereas a public hearing was held on August 25th, 2022 and September 22nd, 2022, to receive public comment on the proposed budget pursuant to OCGA 36-81-5. And whereas the Board of Commissioners, having studied the proposed budget, deemed approval of the budget and to be in the best interest of Walker County, therefore be it resolved that, that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the budget attached hereto in Exhibit B and made part hereof for the year beginning October 1, 2022 and ending on September 30th, 2023, is adopted and approved to be effective on October 1, 2022, so resolved and adopted this 22nd day of September 2022. These have to be brought up separately because these are proposed revenues and expenses for enterprise funds. So an enterprise fund and special revenues funds, most commonly you're going to know these as our 911 center because the dollar 50 that you pay on your phone bill for that service goes to mostly fund the 911 center. This has the fire and rescue department, our landfill operation, also mountain coves, and then any other special revenues or other grants that are received by the county, by standard accounting practices for government, these have to be broken out separately. So there were not any modifications in these because most of these have either a revenue source through a local revenue or through grants. And so this section of our budgeting is not affected by the mileage rate. And so there was no proposed additional modifications needed to get these line items here at this time to, to balance out. So is there any questions, concerns or comments from the board on the enterprise funds and special revenue budgets?
No, sir.
Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the enterprise fund and special revenue fund budget presented?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. By Commissioner Askew, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is passed and budget is approved as presented. Okay, Fiber Build Agreement with Georgia Windstream LLC. You may recall back, I guess it was probably toward the end of last year, we were successful as a county in obtaining a $6.2 million grant to get fiber internet to our unserved and underserved communities. And so with that, Windstream stepped up as a partner on the grant application and they provide the $5 million of additional funding to give us a competitive grant. So this is an $11.2 million project to build out fiber to the home and businesses and farms. So I know I've talked personally to residents in some of our rural communities, primarily over in the Emmercy Valley area, the foot of Lookout Mountain and also on top of Lookout Mountain, that are using dial-up modems with their telephone service to get internet of some type. And so it's referred into the industry as the great digital divide. It's those that have internet and those that don't. And there's a real concern by our state and federal government that those in our community that don't have access to high-speed internet will be left behind, primarily in our education system with our schoolchildren having access to do their homework and to the internet. It's, it's very, very important. And so we are thrilled that Governor Kemp and his staff saw it in the best interest of investing these dollars into Walker County, because this will bring over 3,300 fiber connections directly to people in our county. This project is already underway. There are people in our community, I know people that I've talked to off of West Cove Road, the fiber has already been installed and they've got gig-speed fiber to their home on Tatum Road in a very rural part of our community. So not only is this fiber, but it is gig-speed fiber to your home. And so the people that are on dial-up, when they go from dial-up to gig-speed fiber, it's going to be life-changing. So this agreement here, as the, the states kind of, kind of, kind of catch up with the federal regulations and all the documents, even though there's agreements and everything's moving forward, the paperwork's kind of catching up with the project. And so this is an agreement between the county and Windstream that just outlines the relationship, the exact dollar amount of $6,253,152 that's provided by the state of Georgia from the local physical recovery grant funds and that Windstream will be providing the $5 million match. And this is, it states in here in the attachment, in order to expand high-speed internet services to approximately 3,339 households in Walker County. And so this just puts all of this in writing. Our legal counsel has reviewed this. This is a pretty straightforward contract agreement, but we did need to bring this to the public and make the public aware of this and also for the board to approve, approve this. I know it's a very small map, but there is a map in the packet that's labeled Exhibit A. You see a lot of green dots on this exhibit and some of them are on top of each other because it's been compressed. But everywhere that you see a green dot represents a fiber connection that will be installed to give 3,339 opportunities for people to connect to the internet. So you see, most of this is in the, call it, say, Rock Springs South area of our community from border to border, from Gordon County, Whitfield County to the Alabama line to the Chautauqua County line, because those are the most rural parts of our community and we're the greatest need-wise to build out this service. And so is there any questions, concerns or comments from the board before we vote to approve this agreement?
The public meeting for this is...
Yes, thank you. October the 10th at 6 o'clock over here at the Walker-Lafette Library, Windstream will be with us to give a town hall meeting and give more details about the project. They'll have some better maps. They'll be able to give us an update of where they are on their build-out and also to allow people to pre-register, to get in queue so they know when they come to your location, if... If they've got you pre-registered, they know you're wanting service, and that would be the fastest way to get your service going. It's not the only way, but it would be the fastest way. So this is an informational meeting only, just for public interest of anyone that may be affected or has a desire to have more information. They will have representatives come up and give us an update. Because again, this is moving forward. I've had several phone calls of people very, very excited, because I know something like this is this big. There's skepticism, and people are like, well, is it really gonna happen? And is it really gonna happen in my community? I've had many phone calls of people telling me they're here. They're actually out here running the lines. And I know Brian Hart has talked to people as well, that they see the contractors stringing the fiber on the poles. And so it is happening. So thank you for that, Brian. So any other questions, comments of the board? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the build agreement between Walker County, Georgia, and Windstream to continue the deployment of the fiber?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, contract is approved. I would like to say too, this would not have been possible to get done and get this grant if it hadn't have been for our local legislative delegation. They really, really went to bat for us. They all did a phenomenal job of lobbying on our behalf of our community and proving to the governor's office that there was a great need in Walker County. So I want to publicly thank our entire legislative delegation that represents us in Atlanta, because we couldn't have done it without them. Okay, the next request that we have here is for some funding out of their SPOLOSH budget. This is a request from the Cherokee Regional Library System to use $107,688.90 of the 2020 SPOLOSH funds for capital improvements at the Laffette-Walker Public Library. Would you want me to come up and speak? I'll let you give all the details. Yes, please do. Give us the overview.
Hi, I'm Chelsea Kowalski. I'm the Assistant Director over at the Cherokee Regional Library System. So this is in regards to our Laffette-Walker County Public Library branch. Our HVAC system is failing us, unfortunately. And we have spent over the past six years about $50,000 in renovations. So we have been looking at it very closely to see what we can do, not throw in, you know, good money after bad. And so we have been able to, we've kind of lucked out. We've been able to, you have to see two quotes in front of you. One of them is to actually replace the system itself with part of the reason why the system's no good, it's the first generation. And so we would like to replace it with the fifth generation of that unit. We did have a mechanical engineer from someone that we're not, we don't normally pay money to, come in and kind of give his assessment on it. And he does believe that these fifth-generation units are, they're really good. That the first generation was just, you know, the first generation. So he did recommend by replacing it with the same type, we're gonna be able to save quite a bit of money in ductwork and those costs. And so the quote is for $358,963. The request that we are asking for is $107,000 and some change. That is 30% of the total. We are able to get 70% of the cost paid for using the major repair grant from Georgia Public Library Service. It is coming from their FY '22 amended budget. So they do need to have it expended by May 31st. And I will brag on our library a little bit. We have quite a good reputation for the way that we handle our finances. And so normally, they give us a 50, it's usually a 50-50 grant match, but because of the relationships that we've created and our, frankly, our great reputation financially, they have kind of given us a 70-30, which is great. So we're only asking for 30% of that cost. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Very good. In our SPOLOSH budget, just to call everyone's attention, it is in the packet tonight. About halfway down on the page, it says capital investment in technology advancements, books, and facility improvements for our three public libraries. There was an allocation budgeted for $150,000. This is the first drawdown request that the library staff has come forward with. I have met with the staff, and they've also been in collaboration with the city, because it is the Walker-Laffette Public Library. And so both the county and the city both put annual funding into that system. And so I know in speaking with Lisa Eubanks, they have extensively exhausted all options. And you can see a couple of different quotes are quite in range. Callahan Mechanical has been a true partner for the library system for many years and great reputation. So I fully support the request, and I think it is the proper use of these funds. And that still leaves them a little over $40,000 to use over their SPOLOSH funds for other areas of need in any of the three libraries. And so for the state to be able to step up and give the 70% grant, that's the power that we try to do as much as we can is to take SPOLOSH dollars and leverage those with other grant dollars to really have a positive impact. And so this really checks all the boxes. So thank you for all of y'all's hard work on this.
Thank you.
So y'all have used Callahan in the past there?
Yeah, we have.
Did they install the first-gen units that are there now?
I don't remember.
I don't remember. I do not know. I do not believe that they did. That was before I worked for the Regional Library System.
Yeah, I was just curious.
When that property was under construction, I was involved in the Regional Library Board. And actually, my second meeting going on the Regional Board is when we voted to board the place up, because we were out of money. And after that time, most of the contractors and everything got changed over, because that project was under a lot of stress, so...
They did. I just got a text from my director. She's watching. They did install that.
Yeah, I could remember. That's been, how many years ago was that project?
Nine. It was 2000. Lisa.
It's about 10 years.
Lisa's texting you.
Technology. Yeah, I think that's about 10 years ago. So, and that's the thing, this is original equipment to that building. There has been service mechanical, I mean, not due to the service provider locally, but just the technology has been a challenge for them, literally, from the beginning.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, any further questions of the board on this purchase order request out of the SPOLOSH funds? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this request of $107,688.90 from the 2020 SPOLOSH allocations for the public library system? We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, request is approved. Thank you. Okay, approval of the estimate for the purchase order for Big Woody's Tree Service LLC for the chipping of the brush at the Walker County landfill. Is Payne Gilli with us tonight?
Payne's here.
Yes.
Come on up, Payne. Take the floor. This is something Payne puts a lot of work into.
It's been a long day. Good evening, everyone. Yes, this is a proposal to grind our brush and tree pile that we have. Since, I guess, during this fiscal year, we've accumulated about 2,500 tons of brush and trees, and about 195 stumps. And we, and an additional 300 tons out of county. So it's about 28 altogether, as far as the brush and trees go. But anyway, every year, we grind this material up. And then during the year, we transport it to a facility in Stevenson, Alabama, where they burn it for fuel to power their facility. And we've done a good job this year. Jason has kind of managed that portion of the operation, and he's made plenty of trips this year. And this is, we approached other people to bid this, but we came back to Big Woody's because of their experience and their familiarity with the facility. And the price that they gave us was a good price. So I'm asking for approval for this estimate, so that we can move ahead and get this planned. Right now, they can mobilize out there about October 10th. And it'll probably take them, you know, a week or two to do this work. So this is a big part of our recycling program.
Do they just base their estimate on the amount of tons you tell them that are there? Or is that...
Well, they've come out and they've looked at the site, and we've measured it off. And they know their equipment, how much they can do a day. And they've looked at the size of the geometry of the pile, and that's what this estimate is based off of.
In past years, we've worked off of an hourly scale of different parts of equipment. And our staff spend a lot of time out there monitoring and managing our gauges on equipments and things, and it creates a lot of extra work. So when we put the request out this year, we wanted a set price for a company to come in and give us a price. Also, that makes it better for us from a budgeting standpoint. So this expense is in our FY '23 budget for the landfill that you've approved. We have been working with Big Woody's, this is probably the fourth, fifth year? Okay, fifth year. They've been a very reliable vendor, and they show up when they say they're gonna show up, and they do what they say they're gonna do. So Payne's got a good working relationship with them. And like you say, they can mobilize and start very soon. So this is prime weather to get this done. This also reinforces and strengthens our recycling program that we're required to have by EPD. And then when we take and haul this product to Stevenson, Alabama, then we do get some revenue from those to offset this. So currently, y'all are turning about how many loads a week to Stevenson?
Two to four.
Tractor trailer loads in our new truck.
Yeah, we've probably hauled 2,800 tons to Stevenson this year.
So we've been able to increase that, which helps clear our allocated space. So when they grind, they've got somewhere to take it to. In early days, it was kind of a, y'all were playing a lot of moving around. It was kind of dicey there for a while. But Payne and I have spent a lot of time talking about this. He's done a great job putting this together and collaborating. And so I think it's a very good project and a very, very fair price for the amount of work. Any other questions for Mr. Gilli? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this purchase order request of $28,815 to Big Woody's Tree Service?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this is approved. Thank you, Payne. I know you've put a lot of work into this.
We appreciate it.
Okay, now the action items on our public hearings. Britt and Anna Bab request a conditional use variance for a tiny home for property located at 1213 North Cedar Lane, Flintstone, Georgia, 30725. Tax mapping partial number 0-022-004. This had already been, as required, to the Planning Commission, and there was a recommendation to approve. Our Planning Director, David Brown, is here tonight. Do you have anything additional to add to this, David?
No, I actually, I looked at the residents today. They've done the accurate job of what they've done as far as a tiny house. It's gonna be a great asset to Walker County and tourism.
Okay, all right, that's a recommendation from our Planning Director. Any further questions, concerns of the board? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the conditional use variance for 1213 North Cedar Lane, Flintstone, Georgia?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this is approved as submitted. Okay, the next one we have is James D. Spurgeon, request to rezone from C1 Commercial to R2 Residential for property located at 5285 North Highway 27. Laffette, Georgia, 30728, tax mapping partial number 0-329-2-028. Planning Commission also heard this case, and the Planning Commission's recommendation was to approve as submitted. Any further discussion of the board on this?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of questions for Mr. Spurgeon. So, Mr. Spurgeon, I did drive by the property, if you want to come up, or you can sit there, whatever works good for you. I did drive by the property. I saw some posts in the ground. Is it sort of your thought that you would build a privacy fence? Or is that something that the new owner would do?
Something that the new owner, he's gonna build a privacy fence around it. No problem to hit with any noise or anything for Rock Springs Tire. It don't seem like that they have a lot of problems, no, it's because you got a part of a complex.
Yes, sir.
Right behind it, and I've talked to some of them, they don't complain about it.
Yes, sir.
I think that's a good thing, though, if you agree to put that fence up. Like you said, they've been there. We don't want to do something to help you and create a problem that you're not expecting. So, and there is a very, very close proximity. So you've already started that fence, and you plan to go ahead and get that done as you're doing your improvements. I know you, the building official met with you and talked to you about what would need to be done to get it for habitable. Because didn't you say, Mr. Tim?
Yes, I did meet with him also, I think.
Yes.
They're gonna go over it.
Right. And didn't you say you've been in the area since the late 70s? It's always, all that you can remember, it's always been used as a commercial property? Or is it rented, was it housed?
No, it's always been the other way.
Okay, until what time was that massive deal do that? Do you remember ballpark?
I think I voted, and I'm just, it's just that.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Over 10 years.
Okay, yeah. I knew it'd been a while. I just couldn't remember how long.
And I hadn't really done anything with it. It was a character shot. I liked all the woodworking stuff in it, so I ended up buying it.
Okay, any other questions with the board? Okay, do we have a motion from the board to approve as submitted?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it is approved as submitted. Okay, the next item on our agenda is just our monthly statistics report. I won't cover everything in here just due to the sake of time. I know it's getting late, and everybody's been sitting here a long time. Couple of things that I do want to point out to you. Registered voters, this is something that this data's coming to us now from our Registrar's Office. In August, it was 321 people that registered to vote in Walker County. A lot of this is driven, when you renew your driver's license, they're promoting you to register to vote. And so there's still time for people to vote that want to vote in the upcoming general election in November. Our fire department was very active installing smoke alarms. This is something that's very, very important in our community. They save lives. Our fire department would much rather come see you and install some free smoke alarms than to come out and pull you out through the window when your house is on fire. So please reach out to our first responders at the fire department. They are very joyful when they come out and install smoke alarms. Want to highlight too, our single-family home construction with 10 permits for the month of August. That's 103 for the year. There's still people coming to Walker County, because as y'all know, sitting here tonight, we've got a great place to live. If you look there, under our transit service, the very last line, our transit is going great. In July, there was 2,290 trips, and August, 2,939. If you look at year-to-date, through the month of August, we've almost hit the number that we did in all of 21. So our expansion with our Roper route, where we're transporting people on the north end of the county to our designated route to Roper, for employment's going well, and then also, we're getting more riders. We're running about a half a day on Saturdays for people that need transit service. So it's really been a great program for our community. And that's something that the state and federal government gives us. the state, federal government gives us grant funding for as well. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant, could you give us an update real quick on where we are in our safety committee purchases and stuff like that? Do you have a, just a little? You've been, you've been good to keep us up to speed on that.
As of today, we received nine of the signed PTM 166 for the sheriff's department. There's one on back order, excuse me. The other, the two PTM 466 may be three or four months out, but we've made contact with Pat Cook, training officer, and he wants to keep these. They've got one a little bit, it's a less number, like a 460, but it doesn't have the image viewing that these do, so he wants to stay at the 466. We received our five large ANSI metal first aid kits, like for the courthouse, magistrate court. We got three others to put up. We got the vest to the assessor's office for the field operators, and we got one weather guard shelf unit that went in the coroner's van. They did not have a separation from the driver's compartment to the transport. So that's been bought, installed, and they're using it now.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
All right. Okay, this time on our agenda is our commissioner comments. We'll start with our District 1, Commissioner Blakemore.
Just appreciate everybody coming out and getting involved in their government. Helps us better make decisions to benefit y'all. Thank you.
Mr. Askew?
Oh, well, you, you hit on one of my topics that I wanted to, to bring up, and it's, it's real important, and that's about our election coming up. As you, as you stated, our, our last date to register will be October 11th, and then you've got absentee voting that goes through the 28th. Early voting starts October 17th through November the 4th. Saturday voting will be October 22nd to 29th. Now, I know it's hard to remember that, but you can go to the website and, and, and keep all this in mind, but having the issues that have been brought forward in, in talking about roads and road conditions and things like that, and as we all know, our T-Splash was voted down, penny on the dollar, it was already in place, and, and for whatever reason, it was voted down. So I just want to emphasize the importance of, of the vote. And, and like I said, you come in, we appreciate you coming in and being involved here personally, but, but we've got to get folks involved in, in voting, not just locally, but statewide. There's some, some things going on, we just really need to be involved and pay attention. So I would just ask for everybody, as concerned citizens, to, to pay attention and get the word out, and help, help make sure that people understand that, that the dates where we don't miss an opportunity, because that is a right that we, a lot of people have, have given their sacrifice, their lives, that we have the right to vote here in this country. And, and things have gotten a little off-center, I think, and I think if we, if we show up in numbers, we can, we can bring things back where they need to be. So I really want to emphasize that about just voting and pushing for people to participate in that process. Because like I said, that T-Splash could have really, would have really taken care and helped us a lot on, on these roads and things, and we depend on that. So just thank y'all for your participation, and like I said, just please get everybody out. Let's work together as a team. Let's try to get, let's, let's, let's get people out here and get active.
Good, very good. Commissioner Hart?
I would like to recognize a young man who is a senior in a fed high school, he's dealing Roman in Northwestern, he's a resident of Villeneuve. He's going to be on American Idol here in the next coming months. His name is Ethan Slaughter. So he's played at the Honeybee Festival and several events around Walker County, and also in Chattanooga some, so I'll be updating you guys on that, so you can watch that and vote for him, and just go put Villeneuve on the map.
Are you ma, are you managing this?
I'm the coach.
He's getting a cut here.
I had read on, on Facebook...
It's awesome.
That you were the coach.
That's not true.
Could imagine on Facebook, you're not being true.
That's right.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight. I want to say thank you to all of our county employees for the hard work that you do and the wonderful job that you do. This Saturday is a free fishing day in the state of Georgia. Residents do not need a fishing license or a trout stamp. So that is on Georgia, state of Georgia public waters, so go fishing on Saturday, buddy. So, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Just another comment about our event on Monday night, October the 10th, over here at the Walker-Lafette Library on the broadband. Also, at 7 o'clock that night, the folks that are the developers of the McLamore Resort up on Lookout Mountain's going to also come and give a community town hall update. So anybody that has an interest in McLamore, they're going to come and talk about their progress, show some photos, and also, they're looking to hire about 300 people. And so they're looking for, for people in Walker County that wants to go have a career at McLamore and be a part of the launch of that hotel resort. And second golf course is under construction, so we will have Windstream at 6:00 and the McLamore Development at 7:00, all at the Lafette-Walker Library on October the 10th, starting at 6:00. Okay. At this time, it would be our, on our agenda for an executive session, so I do know that we have an executive session for cybersecurity that we need to talk about as a board. Is there any other?
Personnel.
Personnel, okay. So just to keep it simple, I'll make the motion that we go into executive session to discuss cybersecurity and also personnel. So do we have a, have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will stand adjourned for our executive session, and we will take up our cybersecurity first. Okay, it is 10:21 on Thursday, September the 22nd. We just come out of our executive session. There's no further action of the board at this time, so do we have a motion to officially adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we want to consider a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. Anything y'all want to talk about before we close out?
No, sir.
Well, I don't, you know, no.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned.